Thank you, Dan and AJ for giving us some time today to talk a little bit about why you're both running for Portland City Council. Why don't we start off with AJ, do you want to tell us just a little bit about what, why you're running?
Yeah, my name is AJ McCreary. I'm running because Portland needs new fresh energy in City Hall. Our city is in crisis, our city is bleeding and we need some healing energy to help bring us together and move us forward in a innovative and logical, practical way. I've been doing community work with Equo Giving Circle and Mom Block, Race Talk, STEPS, PDx for the last couple of years. I've put a lot of resources directly into the community and we know that resources really make a difference in the way that we're healing around public safety, housing, and just overall income needs. I want to bring that energy to Portland City Hall. I want to help us be, get back on track to be a city that is progressive, that is a city that is thinking about climate change and the environment. Help us get back to a city where people are thriving. We need housing, we need food access, we need public transportation, we need so many things, I can keep going on and on and anybody that has been, you know, watching particularly the folks in this seat the last couple of years, seat number two, even beyond, you know, just two years, nothing has happened, nothing has changed. And if we want to move forward as a city, we need new folks. We need somebody who is going to be thoughtful, community minded, and I am that person. And so call from community to step up and to run. And so here I am running and I am, have already been doing innovative change work in our city and I want to take that to a citywide level.
Great, thank you very much. Dan, tell us a little bit about why you've decided to run for reelection?
Yeah, first of all, thank you Oregon Editorial Board for providing the venue to have some dialogue this morning. My name is Dan Ryan. I was elected to Portland City Council less than a year and a half ago and I'm just getting started and I wanted to have a full term so I could serve my hometown like I committed to when I jumped in just a little over two years ago. I said yes to become a leader in our city at a time when the majority are frustrated. I know I was one of them when I began, I was one of them and for me it started well over a decade ago. I kept wondering why our local government leaders were tolerating the intolerable. And since my arrival, I've really been focused. I've been focused on results for homelessness, for community safety, for economic recovery, with a committed lens to racial equity and climate justice. In fact, I was the voice on the council that really asked my colleagues to focus on those top priorities. I embraced my lived experience of losing my brother on the streets with a dual diagnosis of mental health and behavioral health, and have had the courage to disrupt the houseless industry's housing-first playbook to a much, much needed reset towards service-first playbook, which includes on-ramps for those who are chronically homeless to receive services and assessments that leads them to successful housing and work life. I stopped the defunding slogan of please from becoming a failed solution and pivoted one that's been building a community safety system with my colleagues that has concrete steps towards restorative justice. I called out and tackled the notoriously flawed permitting system. It's a failed system that really works for no one and it hasn't for some time, for decades in fact. And I've become, it's been a major roadblock for building affordable housing, economic recovery in general. And today we're moving in an efficient streamlined system. And this is real change management that we have to get on right away and not wait for the charter review to, to tell us what to do. And I worked with the Office of Tribal Relations and denied industries further development of fossil fuels in our city. You know, after living with HIV since the early eighties, I received the official diagnosis in 95. And that's when I came home. I was, came home to basically make plans and my sister would put up with me as I was looking at six months to a year to live. Fortunately, new medicine emerged and then that same doctor told me to make plans, told me to get back to work. So for the last 27 years, I've been continuing to be of service to my hometown and it's the most challenging time and I've never had a more difficult job and I've had many, many difficult jobs in my career. But like me, I know Portland will come back and have another chance. We're both long-term survivors and we both need to just grit it out and I know that our best days will do lie ahead and it's going to be difficult and we have to keep making tough decisions and move forward. I just look forward to expanding on these opening thoughts in our time together. So thanks for having me.
Great, thank you. Um, let's start off with this question and Dan, if you'll go first on this one. How will Portland look different four years from now? What changes are you going to be responsible for?
Well, we're going to see an integrated first responder system, not pitting against the please versus Portland Street response, but having 911 dispatchers really trained on who would be the appropriate first responder to send and how wonderful to be in a city that will have choices that also include fire. We will be working with the county and the state to get the state out of speaking of ditches, being in last place when it comes to behavioral health and mental health and hopefully making that one of the number one issues in the gubernatorial campaign. It's, it's not okay to be in a state that has the highest untreated addictions, addiction cases loads with the fewest amount of treatment facilities. It's really coming home to haunt us on so many levels throughout the state. And I also know that we're going to pivoting, we're going to have a permitting system that's finally not the laughing stock of the local area and even the country, but actually allow, really treat our, our partners, whether it's affordable housing, small businesses, residents, developers, as the customers that we need as we make investments in Portland. I'm really concerned how many people are choosing to invest right outside of Portland, but not in Portland. And we really need to turn that around. And I look forward to development. So I look forward to the developing of this lower southeast around Omsi. I look forward to the development of the, the part, the area by the Post, the US Post Office. I look forward to the development in the ESCO properties in northeast and northwest, sorry. And really an opportunity to really see affordable housing take root. That's essential housing too for our workers and jobs that will open up in, in both the development and the long term of those areas. I look forward to having just a homeless system, a system not about homeless, but it's about streets to home buying. And that's the continuum that our office has led, has been leading on. And the two areas that are most severe, severely missing were the on-ramps from those who are chronically homeless to getting into successful housing and then building that resilience to get back into the workforce. I'm an optimist. I do know, I do know this is true and I know this from my lived experience with recovery. The best workers in working with the homeless are going to be those that recover and get that resilience back and they will be the best facing employees for an industry that really needs a fresh, some fresh new employees to be a part of. And also on the other end of the continuum, I'm putting money in the budget first time in a while for land banking so that we can build, we can have homes and we can really help people become first-time home buyers. It's all about generational wealth. And so I, I have a lot of advisors that are in my ear that are young, much younger than me, that are of color, that really say they want to be entrepreneurs. They want to be homeowners. And they just need to be the same services and be left alone, if you will, so that they can have, they can have that same opportunity. And so it's exciting to, to work with, with the community to really build on ramps to long-term housing as well. And so that's just a little bit of an example. I look forward to being that person that's the center of the council that helps build bridges between different, sometimes ideologies. I think we all want the same goals, but we, we have to keep working it out. And I, I think you've noticed since I've been on council, we've been less divisive and we've been more focused and you've seen actionable policy move forward. And I look forward to being a part of that healing.
Great, thank you. AJ, same question for you. Four years from now, from now, how different will Portland look and what changes will you be responsible for?
That's a great question. I think one of the big changes that you will see with me as a commissioner is really bringing community together and healing. You've been able to see that in my work the last couple of years, that my work, while it is resource-based and focused on economics, it's also really about community healing. I think some other things that you'll see for me is the deep in the work around street response. That program should be 24/7. It should be also really heavily marketed to the community so folks know about it and are familiar with it and are comfortable to lean into that service. Another service that thing that folks will see from me is really leaning into the housing challenge of 3,000, the 3,000 challenge. Getting 3,000 folks into housing immediately. I'd like to see that in even higher number and really move folks quicker than waiting around. We can't be focusing on more, you know, moving people who are outside to fancier outside. I'd like to really, you'll see me actively working with community-based organizations to create long-term relationships. The current funding way for nonprofits, community-based organizations, programs, even city programs are on the short budget. And so it, there's no way for folks to know if, if they're going to be continued funded. So they're always chasing money and they're not actually doing like as much as they want in the work, focusing on the people, focusing on the care. So I'd like to help move us forward in the way that we're doing work with community-based organizations and intentionally having long-term services. Things that you're going to see me champion, mental health services, addiction services, healthcare in general, childcare, public transit, the things that make us a livable city. Myself as an individual, I have tons of folks within City Hall that I already am, you know, have working relationships with, good relationships with and excited to work with. And same on the council, I have working relationships, folks with people in that space already and excited to work with. So I think that you're going to see an individual who is energetic, who is innovative and who is going to not be focused on my own ego, but hyper-focused on the community and actually healing through things that actually work, stuff that is rooted in care. My interests aren't rooted in large business or corporations and that's going to show up in the way that I show up in City Hall.
Great, thank you very much. AJ, if you can go first on this question. Tell me what you think about the city's approach to homelessness so far and why are we not seeing more results despite the millions that have gone to both the, or from the city as well as a county to addressing this measure or this, this problem?
Well, I think because we're not rooted in long-term solutions and we keep pretending that there, we need new fresh data. There's decades worth of data. Portland State just put out a a wonderful report that's very informative. There's tons of data and it says that we need housing first and we can't be doing temporary shelters all over the city. We need a multi-pronged approach. How we need to be focused on getting folks housed now. The last couple of years, we keep seeing this focus on shelters. The shelters, the temporary rest villages are 60 beds times 60, what that's roughly 260, 250. Not enough to actually put a dent into the work that we need to happen in our city. And we're not working with community-based organizations, which is the way to get trust. The government has a long history of being divisive and not necessarily always working with the people. And we know that community-based board, excuse me. We know that community-based organizations are the way to help circumvent that and to create long-lasting relationships with the community and create that bridge. Because we have not done that and because we, the way that the funding is around folks doing on-the-ground work, even with CBOs, community-based organizations, that trust is broken. And so because of that, we're just going to see this grow, this issue grow bigger. We're not rooted in long-term solutions. If we are rooted in long-term solutions, at this point, we would be seeing a completely different experience. And this can't be blamed on anybody but those who've been sitting in those seats who have long-established records, whether it was that Portland City Hall or school board. The folks that are empowered, have been empowered, the generation that's been in power has, is not rooted in community. It's not rooted in solutions and it's not rooted in making things in a way that everybody thrives. And so because of that haphazardous, you know, approach, because of the investment in, in corporations and the continuing to entertain large developers who are not rooted in this community. That's why we continue to see the, the, the cost of everything go up and the need of the community grow. So it's, it's failed policy. It's decades worth of failed policy.
So let me follow up a little bit on that because there has been a housing-first approach for many years driven by the county to the point where there's a lot of concern that there's just simply not enough temporary shelter and that it hasn't been keeping pace with, with the exponential growth in the number of, of people who are unhoused. So I guess I'm wondering just, why do you feel that there has not been that focused on permanent, permanent shelter, on permanent housing?
Because a lot of the focus is on shelters or short-term situations. One of the things that folks that are trying to get housed is they need long-term support. You've got to support somebody longer than three months or six months who's been in complete trauma. It's going to take a little bit longer and the way that we continue to work with folks coming out of this crisis is on this very short burst. And part of that is the way that community-based organizations are funded or that programs are funded. It's also not taking into account that folks have very vastly different experience when it comes to being houses and why their houses and what they actually need. Some people have mental health issues, some people have addiction issues, some people who just had a, a medical thing, like a broken leg couldn't work and they're out on their luck and now their whole family spiraled and it's a saga, right? Like, so there's, we have to have a multi-approach, a prong way of moving this forward and we haven't had that. We just, it, it's been hyper-focused on shelters, it's been hyper-focused on working with developers and we know what's happening around the, the, like the affordable housing. We're subsidizing developers and the housing isn't still afford, it's not affordable. So we, we have to really shift the whole, I mean, it's the whole system. It's, it's also understanding that food and housing and healthcare and transportation is also interwebbed together and that when we're talking about these solutions, we need to also be talking about connecting those other dots.
Great, thank you very much. Dan, can you talk a little bit about just how effective or ineffective do you think the city's approach has been to homelessness?
Yeah, thank you, Helen. I think it's important for me to always start off by saying the city and the county's approach. I have a dotted line relationship to the Office of Homeless Services. The county oversees that office and that's where the culture, that's where the contractors live, the contracts to the providers. And I think it's really important to know that it's a partnership. And under my leadership, I think, I know that we've seen more streamlining of, of investments. I, I know that we're working together closer than ever before and I've been a big part of that. One thing I called out when I first got into the meetings, there's an executive session that a home for everyone is the governance structure, if you will. And I sit on that with the Chair Kefory, with Commissioner Myron and Mayor Wheeler and other, and others. And so it was real important for me to ask questions about data because again, we can't wait for a HUD point in time count that most people poke holes out for other right reasons to think that we have rich information about who's actually on our streets, who they are. And it is so important for us to do those assessments so we can also make better strategies on what type of steps we need for them to get off the streets. You know, our largest growing populations of concern are seniors and shared housing works really well for them. We always must focus on families and keeping them housed. So the point is if we have more information, we can have better strategies that maybe will be like five different ones instead of one, one size fits all. I also really called out that, that on-ramp that was missing. And you know, I was motivated to run because my bipolar brother who went back out, went away from his medications that worked at 10 years before he ended up on the streets and then became addicted to what would make his bipolar brain feel better, which was the cheaper street drugs he could get ahold of. So I was well aware of this issue for some time and I was always so frustrated to find out how difficult it was to attain any services. So I just wanted to make sure right when I got in office that I asked those questions and I kept hearing from the county that it was all about housing and it was very easy for me to push back and say, well, my lived experience is that it wasn't about housing. When you're, at least with my experience and other addicts I know, when they're untreated, you get into a place where your survival is about getting the fix every day. And so a lot of our street crime at the moment is, they're being used as mules to, to, you know, I think to, to, to do some of the crime, whether it's Cadillac and Burger or whatever, to get the money so they can, you know, get readily available new hard drugs that are available. And so I, I wanted to make sure that we were honest about this dialogue. And it's really more severe than ever. It's so complex that when I talk to friends that are involved either as nurses in emergency, yeah, like say Providence, or if they're involved in addiction recovery services, they're so overwhelmed and perplexed by the reality of the new methods on our streets. It makes people so much more aggressive than ever before. And we have to be honest about what that looks like in terms of both withdrawal periods and how we can help someone build their resilience and get into recovery. So I just wanted to make sure that we got honest about those on-ramps. And so since I've been in office, that's happened. I also liked in the fall bump, that was last fall, where we actually focused on both outreach workers, which, which really needed to be an uptick because again, we have to do assessments on the ground and get good data. And the other was the, an improvement in the impact reduction services, which helps us keep sanitary conditions around the city where we have people camping. Both of those needed a lot more resources for us to move forward. And so I pushed hard for that. And I want to acknowledge that, you know, Chair Kefory has been in this lane for a long time and I want to respect anyone, especially now more than ever as the person that got this assignment. You know, people instantly blame you for everything when you're, when you're doing this type of intense surgery at this critical time. And I respect, I'm on the shoulders of people that have been doing that good work. We are moving from a governance structure and home for everyone to the here-together type governance structure, if you will. And that will be a really good opportunity for us to do a reset on who's at the table, who's missing at the table have been, especially now with the here-together measure where a lot of our higher earners in our tax brackets are responsible for the money coming in. And they have a point of view and they need to be listened to. And so it's important that the table has more inclusivity in terms of having those interests at the table as well. I know when I was all, at all hands raised, I, when we got population results for graduation rates, it didn't move until we had accountability from all sectors at the table. We could usually get clear on what our goals were. We had different methodologies on how to get there, but let that tension be in the room. It's time for us to have frank conversations and not make this issue so divisive because it really is the number one issue that's going to prevent Portland from moving forward. And I'm just concerned like everyone is that even if we house 5,000 people in the next two years, what happens if 10,000 new people are now homeless in Portland? And so those are the reason why we have to be so focused on both prevention and on services at this time.
Great, thank you.
Dan, I know that you have been focused on locating the safe rest villages and yet we came through another very cold winter and actually particularly freezing spring and we still, still do not have those up and running. What, what is taking so long to locate these villages and, you know, at, at what point does it feel like it's a little too late?
Well, it's definitely not too late and they're moving. And, you know, I was the first local elected official that had some new innovation into the continuum of on the streets to stability. And it was great to get the six zero vote, it was five zero, sorry, I just added someone to the council, five zero vote back in July. I did find out about a month later that the ARPA rules are different than the CARE Act rules and gee, I wish I would have known that when I was ambitiously promising that we could have them open by the end of the year, but I'm always going to be goal-focused and I'm going to always try to get the government systems to move faster. There's been a lot of internal headwinds as well. We had, you know, any, I didn't give him time, a bureau could say, could block something. And I was so happy when the mayor changed, they had emergency ordinance that gave me agency to finally work with those bureaus where we were this close on a couple of them for a long time. I think you might have noticed that once that emergency agency was given to my, to me in my leadership role, we were able to announce four more sites just within a week. So it, it was really a game changer when that happened. And also the culture at the county and in the provider network to accept that in addition to housing first with services, we also need these on-ramps. And it's, it's not, it wasn't in their playbook. To your points earlier, that has been the county's playbook, has been housing first and everyone agrees that's a big part of it. But I had to disrupt that system to really get us to talk about the totality of the challenge that we're facing. And I had too many stories from too many people that talked about people moving into some really nice new housing and tearing it up because you, you can't look at the conditions that are experienced on the street and think that someone that is in, especially those that are not treated for mental health, the mental, the mental health, behavioral health, to go into a closed tiny quarter and think they're going to be okay. All of us know in recovery that it's about connection and not isolation that gets us to our better days.
But when do we expect to see those operations?
Yeah, we'll have two open in the next month. One will be on the Southwest Nato and the other is out at the Sears Army, which I'd rather call the Moknuma Village site. After that, the sequencing will be the partnership we have with Trimat, which the attorneys all got an agreement on that about a month ago. And that has cultivated initiatives, will be the provider there. The other two will be all good, all goods well-known for doing the St. John's Village. And after that, it'll probably go to Peninsula Crossing. And the good news is, we told you, we provide geographic equity in terms of the placements of these, which is really important because as you know, every Portlander knows throughout the city that we have people living on our streets throughout our city. And so they will all be open before the end of 2022.
Okay.
Yeah, and they are six to nine-month assessments. So please know these aren't permanent housing and then they'll move on. And we're, we're adding some new innovation into the system. And if we get results like I hope we do, then we will figure out how to have this as part of our system for the much longer term.
Okay. AJ, to you, I'm curious, based on what you said earlier, I'm not sure that necessarily you think this is the best idea with the safe rest villages, but correct me if I'm wrong. And, and if you do see a place for them, what would you do to be more effective and to get them? What would you have done or what would you do to get them on, up and operational more quickly?
Well, I don't know the inner details of this particular project. I just know what the public knows. And as you were just asking, what is the timeline? So I, my, my big concern with this is it barely, it barely puts a dent in the knee. This is like 60, maybe 100 beds per site. That's not enough. It's not going to put a dent into, to our situation at all. And it's also not necessarily building good relationships with the community. We saw with the, the showers when they were on the, the Southeast waterfront that that was going well. And then because it disappeared so quickly that it really harmed trust with community members who were using that, those services. And so here we are planning the exact same sort of timeline and activity, which makes no sense. It's also really expensive to be creating these temporary solutions that have, you know, a two-year max lifespan. Like this is not, this, this is where all the money is going, that we're doing all this temporary, let's do this, let's do that. But we're not actually creating solutions for our community. We do need preventative services to make sure that people are not falling into houselessness. Like we need to go upstream and definitely address that and make sure that is, that is being situated around wages, access programs before people are in a full-on crisis, basic resources like food, how, you know, childcare, transportation, et cetera. And around getting people housed right now, we've got to be having long-term solutions. So we need to have long-term shelters. We need to have shelters that have, going to have a long lifespan and that we can have long-term relationships that people can trust that this organization, this shelter, this space is safe, it's culturally competent, the resource are regular, the people, the, the folks that work there. There's some consistency because it's building that trust with people who are in severe crisis that is critical to help them move forward into the next steps for whatever they need. And again, each individual is going to need something different. One of my concerns around the shelters is most shelters don't take families of like four or more. And so if there's a mom who is, and I regularly help folks around this through Mom Block. If there's a mom with three or four kids, which is a normal thing that happens, they're not, or multi-generational household that is now homeless, houseless, they're not going to be accepted into a shelter because there's too many of them. So our obsession with this is the one, the one way is very dangerous and it excludes a lot of people who are experiencing this crisis. I think that there is a major disconnect in the way that we're talking about houseless folks as if everybody has the same narrative and they don't. I also am talking to community members. I'm also talking to people around these solutions and temporary safe rest villages for a very tiny amount of people isn't it? I do believe that having integrative mental health services and healthcare throughout the city that's accessible to people is critical. I do believe that we really as a larger city need to be addressing the chronic addiction within our city. This is a, you know, decades situation. It has just been progressively getting worse. I've watched that from being a kid here to being an adult here. So we, we do need to have, put in some really serious community work around addiction and also the services that we can provide around that. And that is a relationship with the county. But these temporary solutions, it's a waste of tax dollars, money, and it's going to have people who are furious and frustrated on all sides of the table, even more furious and frustrated in a really short amount of time.
I could just, it will, it real quick. So at the beginning of COVID, Commissioner Hardisty and the mayor worked on getting some temporary facilities up and running. Those were the two on Water Avenue. Those were handed off to our office right after we passed the safe rest villages and we've done great work to relocate one. And we've done great work to relocate one up above Widler. It's much better conditions. The neighbors are not complaining because uh it's a restorative setting. We're also having results and all good is actually the provider. Of that uh of that village that's been relocated up to Widler and we're moving the other facility over to Southwest NATO. In a much better setting, again, where people can um have services and get uh in looped into a case manager and into housing uh much quicker than they would. In whatever that was that was on Water Avenue. So we're on it. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, AJ, let me ask you about this. You know, you you talk about the the need to have a housing first approach and. Be looking at permanent solutions for houselessness. At the same time, the Portland metro area is roughly fifty thousand units. Under what it needs to house the current population. Demand is only growing. You have this pressure on housing. Where, how do you provide? I guess what solutions would you offer to help spur? That kind of development so that you have enough housing for people and and can actually place people through this housing first strategy?
Well, one thing that can happen quickly is to change up what's happening in the housing market is create more pathways for homeownership for black and brown folks and millennials. That's going to free up a lot of rental space. Um, two, we've got to intentionally be working with community based organizations. This using developers solely as a way to create housing is dangerous and is not community focused. And it is not an investment in the long term community. And so. If we're going to be building affordable housing, why aren't we doing that with a variety of different community based organizations? Um.
So when you, when you talk about affordable housing, you mean uh publicly subsidized housing projects? Or do you mean naturally occurring affordable housing, which is usually older stock?
I think a combination of both, but I wouldn't call it projects or or.
Uh, developments or.
Yeah, I I think I think that we can be a lot more thoughtful in our housing approaches. And I think that we can be a lot more community focused. Right now, we're we're even working with developers who don't even, who are not even based here. So we're we're turning Portland into this corporate setting that is is void of everything that is charming and lovely about here. Uh, when we're talking about this housing crisis, we do need to be. Being innovative and using some of the many, many empty buildings, we can be changing things up in a relatively short way. Um, I think that sometimes the way that we intentionally stall. Solutions is saying that it's going to take a long time. It's going to be complicated. Hmm. If this is a city back program. As uh Dan Ryan was just talking about earlier, like the permitting process can be changed and 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 that's something he's currently working on. To get it more streamlined and innovate or be innovative in the ways that it's. Moving from eight bureaus to three or however it's going to shake out when that project is is, you know, finalized. Um. I think that we can also be intentionally looking at the um. I mean, really, I mean, really, it's it's really how who we're partnering with is the biggest thing, who we're partnering with, how and why. Um, we're not. We could also be intentionally looking at how how many Airbnbs are on the market because that's a really big issue and in what is available in terms of rental stock. That is still a crisis and it that was talked about pre pandemic a lot here. It's been something all around the way and now it's not being talked so very much anymore. Um, and people will love or hate that I bring that up, but that's that's a big part of where our housing stock is. Um, I think there's a lot more things that we can be looking inward before we're. I don't know, discrediting this is like too big of a solution. I mean, a an issue because that's where it feels like right now we're at.
Okay, let me also ask you, um, uh, there was a recent report that found that Portland had lost four thousand single family homes from the rental market. Since two thousand fifteen, um, the vast or the majority of that since two thousand seventeen. Uh, which landlords blame um on tenant um protection such as rental relocation requirements. Um, is that and that many of these people or many of these owners are mom and pop owners. Um, so you're losing a lot of the naturally affordable um single family homes that had been available for rent. Would you, would you support rolling back or revisiting? Um, some of those tenant protections to see if there is a link between that and what's happening on the single family home rental market?
I think there's absolutely warranted uh conversation there.
Okay, thank you. Um, Dan, uh, same question for you about housing. What could you do or what would you look at to help spur more housing development of any type? Is this, is this a public? Um, answer, is it private development? Um, what is your thought about increasing the availability of of housing?
I think it's both. It's a private and public. Uh, we have a supply challenge and it's been noted for years and. Uh, it is connected to the permitting issue. It's connected to uh some other factors, but the fact is we need, we need supply and demand are 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 old uh. Uh, adage with that when you study anything about economies of scale, it's always, there was always a supply demand. Uh, equation and our supply has been uh under market for some time. And so. It's really important that we continue to uh improve our permitting system and make Portland a place where those uh who can. Invest in Portland and many of our local developers, by the way. Also, I'm so glad you brought up the. The concern about what uh my opponent mentioned, what's charming about Portland. I think what's been charming about Portland and I. As a young artist out of college, I benefited from it is to have mopod line landlords, people who have. They're small business owners who just happen to own um. Provide housing and it's always been one of the largest stock of affordable housing in our city. And I do think the tenant laws have have made some unintended consequences. I was hearing this. From so many people who love Portland, care about Portland, have um taken in so many. Uh, tenants without even doing a background check, uh, just based on getting to know them and not providing big uh first last month rents, but. You know, relational type landlords and so many of them have been getting out of the housing market and selling their homes. And they're not going to be replaced with the same civic minded relational type landlord. And so. That stock has been going down. I'm glad there's data behind it now. And as Housing Commissioner, I have, um, I I I do want to look into the unintended consequences of, again, they were good intentions. But if in fact it's uh shortening the supply because the rules are just too cumbersome. For people who are small business landlords to want to provide housing for Portlanders, then we need to listen to them. And I've I've been trying to get new people on the rental commission so we can have a more balanced perspective on these conversations.
Great, thank you. Um, I think we could talk about housing and homelessness forever, but we.
Yeah, I just want to add that the the how I want to thank the voters and the and especially those property owners who have uh like myself, who has watched their. Um, taxes or property taxes go up quite a bit since we've been passing um much needed housing bonds. And our job is to make sure that we uh have them up and running on time and there's been some great movement. Um, and and I'm excited that we'll have the most units open uh this this year. But we have to continue to look for, um, and we have a lot of partners with nonprofit organizations um that partner with. The those that do development and I think it's that uh connection that's really important to keep working on. It's going to take both the public and the private and the nonprofit communities all to come together to get on top of the supply issue with with housing.
Thank you. Um, I think we want to move on to public safety, but. Um, Dan, if I could follow up later with you, I do want to find out more about the changes in permitting that have. Um, resulted in in uh what I presume would be faster permitting times that, you know, if that's been measured at all, if that's been kind of validated in some way.
Yes, Helen, and look for this at the end of the week. We'll have our first transparent uh real time data on what it takes to go from. Inquiry to issuance of permits. And I've rolled it out internally and I want to make sure that we get it out externally by the end of the week. So I I would love, I I can geek out on this topic. It'll put a lot of people to sleep, but I look forward to our follow up conversation.
Thank you.
I love change management. Yeah.
Great. Um, let's see, uh, Dan, if you can go first on this question. Um, Portland had a record number of homicides last year. It's on track to surpass that this year. What initiatives should the city undertake or what should the city be doing to address that head on?
Thank you for bringing this up. And although it is a national phenomenon, Portland is by some pretty large percentage points um. In the lead in terms of the spikes and increases. I led with Commissioner Rubio, I think it's about a year ago. Where we wanted to get investments into the communities most impacted and I'm still a big believer on that as being foundational. To the restorative justice side of how uh protecting Portlanders and also how important it is for. Our community partners to keep, they have the relationships with the impacted communities and it's very complex. We have a lot of new arrivals that are in conflict with. With one another and there's uh, there's just so many spikes for so many different reasons. We also have. Um, you know, overdose uh increases on our streets and there's uh, it's it's it's. It's just so important that we have community investments involved in this strategy. Because when we look at cities who lower gun gun violence, it's because they have a clearance rate of cases between. Um, between uh in general, and that's because there's trust between the impacted communities and law enforcement. I think that the fact that we're expanding Portland Street Response is a good idea. Again, it needs to be integrated. With um the other first responder systems. This isn't a competition or a shaming of one over the other. It's that there's different, um, police would agree that they should not go to some of the calls and that it should be. Um, a trauma informed first responder from Portland Street Response. And I know FIRE wants that as well. So I think it's really comes down to where do we take people? And I am um in communication with my colleagues at the county. We have to make sure that we have investments. Um, in the DA's office and in the sheriff's office so that we can um get back to whole. And I know that we have to build back our police force. We did some great work in the um, in the in the contract negotiations took place. We finally have a really clear. And concise uh discipline guide. We've been able to the DA DOJ hearings to have a civilian. Uh, dean that will be a part of training. And so it's important that we build morale back with our police and get those vacancies filled. And then we can look at adding uh more police to the system. We dismantled in the painful. Um, and important racial reckoning period of the gun violence type work and we have to look at. Again, how can we keep bringing that back? So we have the intelligence. We need the criminal investigative intelligence. To fight organized crime that's been a spike. It doesn't just happen out of happenstance. There's organized crime. In our city at a much higher rate than there was before.
Thank you. AJ, same question for you, considering the record in uh number of homicides last year, the fact that we're on track to surpass it. What would you support or what do you think the city should be doing to address that?
Well, I think that we first of all have to be looking at. What what we've been doing and if it's not working and currently this model around so much policing and the relationship that we have with police. It's not working here in Portland. It's not working anywhere. Uh, Portland Street Response is an amazing shift out of a way for us to be starting to grow out of our current police model. I'm not saying that we don't need safety precautions for the community, that we don't need people addressing violent crimes or organized crimes. But the current model of community policing that we have doesn't prevent anything. It's not working. So Portland Street Response is number one. Uh, we know data shows us that well resourced communities are safe communities. When communities have the resources they need around housing, food, healthcare, transportation, childcare. Um, et cetera, communities are overwhelmingly more safe. And so when we're talking about gun violence and prevention, we need to be really talking about those other. Services. The my main concern right now around the police is the fact that we have this conversation of should the police get more money? The police currently do not. They have empty. Positions. They have, they're trying to fill positions and they're having a hard time retaining people. So. That culture, that industry isn't that 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 space isn't working in any other industry. If we had the data of it that it wasn't working and that we weren't able to like hire and keep people. Um, in those positions, we would be making intentional shifts. We'd be making more loud shifts of how we can be preventative. How we can come together and move this, move things forward in an innovative way. So. I'm my my big thing right now is let let's get our our city safe again. We need to have street lights. We need to have resources in the community. We need to be. Working with our schools directly. There used to be. Gang prevention programs that work directly with the school that work directly with community based organizations in. You know, whether it was a boy like, um, excuse me, if that's a school. Uh, Boys and Girls Club or other like SCI or other community based programming. We need to be doing things like that. And part of, again, that violence prevention is going to be rooted in having a well resourced community. Uh, we have really great infrastructure to be leaning into to have. A more in depth way that we're touching the public through our schools, through um even Parks and Rec. We need to lean into some of that infrastructure. We even already have neighborhood associations. We could be leaning into the way that we're activating. Those spaces uh more intentionally around public space, safety, engagement. Um, and building those relationships and trust with our community. Cause a big part of shifting from where we're at right now into a space where everyone is thriving. Is going to be hardcore, those relationship buildings. Um. Yeah, so I'm always going to say a well resourced community is going to be a safe community and it's not going to be. Chasing down a department that's flailing.
You know, much of my thirty five year career before I decided to run for office.
Is it a debate?
It's not a debate, but it's, I mean, we, as we, I noted in the email. Uh, people are free to respond to each other. We'll limit it if we feel like it's irrelevant.
No, I I just want to say that I I've been a big believer in upstream development. My cradled career was all about that. I just want to say that today. Portlanders are just suffering from tolerating the intolerable. I mean, a week doesn't go by in my own block where there isn't a report. Of 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 crime. And so it's our response time at the moment that is so critical and I'm glad that we're looking into. Improving that to adding more people to first responder system. And I'm also think it's so smart that we finally have a community safety director and Mike Myers, who will knit together. A comprehensive community safety system. We just got to get better results. It's really, it's really a tough time right now.
The thing though, to remind everybody about police, even if you're calling police and it is. Uh, there is a lag in time in general, police show up after a crime or a crisis has happened. And so if we're really rooted in wanting to have a different solution, different end result, a different experience as a community. While we try to address and work this system or or what we're doing there, we have to be thinking about preventative services, preventative measures. And that's what we have to be focused on. This is what we have to become obsessed with. Right now, we're still obsessed with the police. But what what does it look like and feel like if we shift that even to that preventative space?
Right, but there's been millions that have been shifted to just in twenty twenty or I guess twenty twenty one, I apologize. Where I think it was city council authorized something close to, is it four million for um. Uh, uh, to go to um community based organizations to do violence, uh, gun violence prevention work.
And I've been on those ride alongs. They're really, they're really helpful. That's a good, it's a good resource that we've invested in. But and I think that when Commissioner Hardisty uh led the effort before I was elected to shift fifteen million from the police towards building something. Um, and that was Portland Street Response. That was innovative and that's building something. When there was the following that wanted to cut another additional eighteen, I I I couldn't see any building going on. I just see, I saw a cut and I saw some spraying and praying of investments. And it they don't go far enough. You can't just do little inch wide investments. They gotta go deeper.
And AJ.
So I wanted to follow up on the port. Oh, go ahead, Helen.
Oh, just one quick question, sorry. Um, AJ, would you support further um cutting the the police budget?
As long, yeah, is that and have that money invest into community based organizations and ongoing programming. That money, if it's invested into community and resources and support and solutions, we'll see better outcomes.
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up. Both of you mentioned in the last question about Portland Street Response. AJ, I wanted to start with you. How do you see that program evolving in the next couple of years to address some of these issues that we're talking about?
Yeah, I'd love to see that become a service that is twenty four hours a day and that has a quick response time. Uh, I'd also love to see serious community outreach around it so people know that it's a service and that will help also. Change our conversations in community with our merged responders. I think it'll really open up. An opportunity for people to start coming to the table and feeling more comfortable with the with asking for help. Uh, because that's part of it too, is people don't necessarily feel safe or that the police are a trustworthy organization. Uh, so I think there's a lot of healing that is going to be able to happen through that program and. It's going to be one of the pathways for us to move forward as a city and when we're talking about the culture of policing.
Dan, to you also, you mentioned uh Portland Street Response in a couple of your public safety answers, but tell me also how you see this program maturing. And addressing some of these concerns we have in the city.
Oh, thank you, Laura. Yeah, I know. I'm glad that we're building it. I'm glad. Oh, thank you, Laura. Yeah, I'm glad that we're building it. I'm glad that it's expanded citywide. And it does need to be 24/7 and that's actually projected for us to keep building that into the budget. Right now it's building and so, you know, I just had an example on Friday where someone didn't want to call the police. So they called 911 and requested Portland Street Response. And I haven't looked back, but it was an hour and 20 minutes later, no one had responded yet. And so someone with the mental health episode, they didn't feel like they had the skill sets to go on their porch and calm them down and they wanted some help. And then the, the good news is they knew that they could request Portland Street Response. The challenge is 911 is probably overwhelmed with the amount of calls are getting like that. And so the response time has to improve. So we have, whether it's permitting or, or response times, we have some time efficiency challenges at the city and everyone knows that right now. And so we have to keep measuring those and seeing those improve as we make more investments. But again, I keep talking about is that integration. So I don't think that it's, I don't think we should ever pit police response versus Portland Street Response as well as we keep improving the way Mike Myers, under his leadership, looks as, looks at how we train 911 to make the best decision on who to respond to each call. And I think Portlanders are, would welcome that.
Thank you. I wanted to talk or touch on the Clean Energy Fund because there's been a lot of concerns regarding just the administration, whether there are adequate accountability metrics in place, et cetera. And Dan, I think you go first on this question. Would you support limiting the amount in grant money that the Clean Energy Fund issues this year or until it is able to better come up with some program accountability goals?
Let me start by giving a life experience story. So I took on the CEO job of the Portland Schools Foundation in 2008. And it was, they didn't, the board didn't realize how much in the red they were, but they were. So there, it was in, in the red and we had to dig out of that. And I would say that one of the causes of that was a small organization getting a ginormous grant. And we didn't have the, the infrastructure, if you will, to know how to manage that yet. So there's a reason why people often build their organization in incremental ways. They can build the capacity and capabilities so they can actually execute the infrastructure of, of those investments. So I think that it's important that we are fiscally wise and learn from granting. This was a very large organization that I had to call and say, you know, you're also part of this dilemma here. And it was really easy to say the Gates Foundation, correct? So I think that, you know, I've had my own experiences on how important it is for grantees to work with grantors so that they can be successful with the money that they receive. So that, that would be one, that's one story that I want to share with you on where I'm going to go on this. And so I think we do need to have thresholds on, on how much of an investment one can manage. And then the release of those investments as they build their capabilities and capacities.
So you would vote to, to limit it this year as opposed to authorizing 100 million?
I think it's more case by case. I'm also a big believer in building from the ground up. That's the way you do all change and system change. And so I, I, I love the intention behind it. And I think that we're, have more stories that we should be celebrating than not. But I think we had one story that allows us to have caution. I think Commissioner Rubio's response has been really smart. Her and I share the fact that we both come as leaders from the nonprofit community for over a decade and as CEOs. And so we understand the nuances of this. And so I, I think that we do need better safeguards to make sure that we don't give out a grant unless we're 100% clear that they have the infrastructure that can manage those, which includes having good financial wing within your organization.
But at this point, the Clean Energy Fund is proceeding with, with putting out 100 million or giving 100 million in grants this year, absent, I guess, action by city council to, to steer, to, to change that. At this point, are you, are you prepared to kind of let the, the Clean Energy Fund proceed as it's planning to?
I, I'm, I know that, I, I understand what you're saying. And I also know that Commissioner Rubio has brought a group of people together to give us some updates on findings. And I, I look forward to seeing what she's up with. And now in this job, we're all doing the best we can to manage certain priorities of the city. And I rely heavily on accomplished colleagues, which include one of my endorsements, Commissioner Rubio, to, to help shepherd this along. And I look forward to being a part of that.
Thank you. AJ, same question for you. Would you support limiting the amount of money that the Portland Clean Energy Fund issues in grants this year until there are clearer program accountability goals?
No, I think it should be case by case by the individual applications. I do know that the, there have been slight changes or amendments in the process along the way. I think that's, I think that this is an opportunity for us to be investing in black and brown community, communities in our city in real time in a way that is extremely intentional. And to be, I think it's very racist to be worried about whether or not these organizations can manage funds. Our communities have been kept out of resources for decades. And then to say, well, you have to build on our terms is so problematic and harmful. And that's not how that money was set aside or even like how this fund even came about. So I, I would say no.
So I don't think it's so much the concern about, what, there are certain, like for instance, the diversifying energy situation. That was a situation where there was concern about how that individual organization could manage it based on problems in its history. I guess the, the larger question is about whether the Clean Energy Fund program has specific goals that are, that have, because it's an original passage included goals that were tied to the city's climate action plan, which has since been, I guess, needs to be updated. And so I guess that's the, the overall question, whether there is enough accountability about what this program is supposed to achieve that's been communicated to voters and whether there should be any kind of delay before issuing more grants until the city has that part worked out.
I think it's a really delicate dance and I think that city leadership is going to be very, first of all, how, you've already got people in grant processes and you already told people that this money was going to go out. And community is trying to get programs and get things rolling and ready to receive this money and to start making improvements in the community. To stall that is problematic, especially when we need these things, we need these things to be, we need to be investing in clean energy. We need to be investing in regenerative agriculture that looks like a variety of different things. We need to be thinking about our environment. No, I think it is problematic just to, to stall this. We're, we're in a climate crisis and I, like I said, it is very problematic and it's racist to be keeping funds from communities because white folks in leadership are uncomfortable with how black and brown people are organizing or exist? Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, we have two minutes. I'm, I am going to try to squeeze this one question in. There have been, and AJ, you would be first on this. There have been a number of setbacks with regard to ensuring strong police oversight. While voters approved the establishment of a new police oversight board in November of 2020, it was more than a year before the committee that's supposed to help develop this even met. The city auditor estimates it could be five years before this system is in place. In the meantime, the mayor is looking to put a pause on the PSUP committee due to vacancies and staffing needs. Should, I mean, I guess what would you advocate doing in the, in the meantime? Or should the city look at asking the court to, asking for a court-ordered monitor to oversee the city's compliance with the DOJ, DOJ police settlement?
Well, that's a mouthful. I, you know, I, I honestly, like, I, I think that we need not, I mean, we, we can't pause one thing for, for this. I do think that there needs to be more, more intentionality and work around the police oversight. So for me, this is a little, a yes and moment. Yeah.
Okay. And Dan, is there anything, I guess, what would you say, just kind of considering the setbacks we've had regarding police oversight, to assure people that, that there is a robust system in place? I mean, is a court-ordered monitor the, the right solution?
We need to continue, we need to have the system in place before, and then have a transition to the next one without there being a gap. We have a tendency in our state and our city to shame and shut things down. And then we don't always have the chutzpah to get the next one up and running. And so I haven't had a chance to actually loop back to the mirror on this dialogue and know the nuances of it. But I, I do think it's important to keep the PSUP whole until we have the new one up and running. And I, you know, they could say that about sobering stations or whatever they're being called now. I could say that about closing damaged hospital without a replacement. It's like, we have to stop letting things go away until we have something better in its place. Because who suffers are the people that voted yes on that and expect that type of accountability to be in, in place. So I'm glad there's motions. I know that I gave my suggestions to this a while ago. So it's a, you know, in our form of government, you do your best as executives to, to do your assignments. And so the, these conversations are great for me to actually hone in and know who I need to talk to next. Yeah.
Great, thank you. I think that brings us to the end of the hour, but thank you both for this great conversation. We really appreciate it. I will follow up with you, Dan, on that one aspect about permitting. But if I have any other questions, I'll contact you and hopefully we'll be coming out with our endorsements on Sunday. Oh, wait, yes, this coming Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time. Emma is on here. Hello, Noah from the Schools Work. All right.